We'll call this meeting to order, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for May 29, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maximan.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. And as we do that, I want to remember in our prayers, the Shupman family, the Rinaldi family, and the Bob Brown family. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The opposed motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public that like to comment on anything other than what's on the agenda for today? Seeing none, I'll move on to claims and payments. Payments for the expenditures for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total three hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Three-three-one-nine-five-six-point-four-one. Motion for approval.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures total thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents. Three-two-eight-four-zero-point-three-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this item. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Morning.
Brief update this morning. Our bridge crew is still placing culverts on Marquee Road, so the road is still closed between Al Raymond Road and then Canfield Road. That's on the north border of the county. Our crews are out mowing this week, and it is very dusty out there. Dust control is being applied over the next week or so. But we ask residents to be patient while those vendors get the dust control products applied. And then our trucks are hauling mild rock as well. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, is there a time limit on the dust control when it's usually completed by?
Generally, the vendors get it applied the first two to three weeks of June. Or, excuse me, the first two weeks after we release the road. We've released the roads. That means we've repaired the roads. The dust control products can be applied. They were released approximately a week ago, and now it's going to take approximately two weeks for the vendors, the co-ops primarily, to get the product on the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads, elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for May 22, 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Hearing times are approximate. We have a 9:05 hearing, bid opening for purchase of one motor grader for the county engineer's department. And at 9:07, we had a hearing on the vacation of Oxley Road requested by Daniel Roth and Darlene Roth and Mike and Barbara Farrell. And at 9:09, we have a hearing bid opening for the proposed sale of Country View Care Facility. Moving on to consent agenda by resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is reports. Ben Daddagardell here?
No.
Okay, we'll skip that one. Contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the data grant agreement between Blackhawk County, UNI, Geotree, the use of geographic information system data be approved as recommended by Kim Beeter.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kim, you got anything you want to add to this? Is she? Oh, there she is.
This is just one of our regular college data grants so that they can use it for a project.
All right. Thank you, Kim. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to law's reasonable bid received from Truck Country, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, bid opening May 22 for the purchase of one tandem axle dump truck, fiscal year nineteen city county secondary roads department with a bid of one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
This is low bid, Kathy.
Yeah, as you know, we did open bids here in the boardroom a week ago. We received multiple bids from three or four different vendors. This is the low bid. This truck will be a Freightliner truck with hanky, snowplow equipment, and then with a Bowrock demolition box.
Bowrock?
That's the brand, Bowrock. And we've had all of this equipment before. So I would, it meets all of our specifications, so I would recommend to you that you do accept this bid from Truck Country.
Any questions for Kathy? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a 9:05 hearing, bid opening on the proposed purchase of one motor grader for the county engineer's department.
Motion received. Place and file proof of publication.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received. Any written comments?
No, sir.
Second.
Any oral comments? You're... All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bids received, open in red. Bid deadline was four o'clock last Friday. How many we got, Kathy?
We received two bids by the 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
The first bid is from El Torfer Incorporated, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred dollars. Two-eight-nine, comma, nine-zero-zero-point-zero-zero.
Kind of that.
That is for a Caterpillar.
That's the total bid?
Yes, that includes the motor grader and the snowplow equipment. The second bid comes from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company, Waterloo, Iowa. This is for a John Deere motor grader. That price is two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Two-eight-five, comma, zero-zero-zero-point-zero-zero.
Make a motion, review, place on file.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a 9:07 hearing for a bid opening on the vacation of Oxley Road requested by Daniel Roth, Darlene Roth, Michael, and Barbara Farrell. Motion received and place on file proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file. Any written comments?
No, sir.
No written comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Sorry if we were going to get an overview of the project before we close the hearing.
Go for it, Kathy.
Okay. Good morning, Board. And this is the location. This is a photo of the location. It is east of Waterloo. This is Highway 20 in the north portion of your screen there. So just south of Highway 20 is an acreage on the west side of Oxley Road. Oxley Road was dead-ended when Highway 20 was placed twenty to thirty years ago. You can see that there is a jog in the right-of-way line in the... If you look at the center line of Oxley Road and you follow that up to Highway 20, you can see there was a jog created by the Department of Transportation in the right-of-way. The... This acreage was recently purchased and an addition was deemed to be necessary to be placed onto the home, or an addition was desired to be placed onto the home due to the property setbacks, et cetera. The... I was asked if we would vacate a portion of Oxley Road so that this addition would be able to be constructed on Oxley Road there. In speaking with you all several months ago, we can find no... I've talked to you about no future uses of Oxley Road. We have no desire to extend and overpass over Highway 20 to encourage traffic between the north and south portions of Oxley Road. So my opinion is that we have... This is an acceptable use to vacate the road here on Oxley Road. The Department of Transportation does give us guidance on how we are to go about that. We are to send notices to adjoining property owners, notify utilities, notify the Department of Transportation, talk to you. We've done all that. I have received no opposition. I have received an email from Men American that they do have gas... Excuse me, they do not have gas in the area, a gas line in the area. There is an electric transmission line in the area that is on the west... Excuse me, that is on the east side of Oxley Road that services this home. We have not received a response from Quest, but nevertheless, there will still be the utility easement for any future or any utilities that are not... Did not respond to us. I did receive one call after we had sent the letters out, but that was just more informational about what was going on with this vacation. So I received no protests for this vacation. We have written the legal description, and I would recommend that we vacate Oxley Road.
You go back to the picture again. So point on there, where are the road actions that you're talking about? Is that that dotted line?
Yeah, so it currently ends, this is the northwest portion of Oxley, and then it... There's a slight jog here due to the Department of Transportation, for whatever reason, and then it comes down, follows the center line, and then it goes off to the east here.
Okay, so you're talking about that whole part where the goes down?
Yes, all of this would be...
So where is the addition going to be? It doesn't even look like an addition would even be close to the road.
So I think I'll let the owner speak about that if you don't mind.
Kathy, before you move on, are there considerations for school bus turnaround?
Yes.
Snowplows, et cetera?
So currently, the snowplow, our snowplow turns around here in this East Field, which is owned by Mr. Roth here, as well as the school bus does turn around here as well. There have been accommodations made to extend this driveway, I think ten or fifteen feet to the south, so that the same distance, the same width of this driveway would still be maintained and still allow about a forty or fifty-foot backup and turning radius for a school bus.
Who would do that?
Mr. Roth has said that he would increase the width of that driveway to the south.
That driveway has always been, has been there for several years, and Kathy asked me if I would... The driveway on the east side there has been in place for years, and Kathy asked me if I would extend it another ten feet further south because of the fact that we will be moving road closed sign, I guess you'd call it, or bank there, excuse me, further south. So by moving that sign south, it still makes this driveway, which is about eighty feet wide now, accessible for the road grader and school bus to turn around. The school bus has been using it for several years, and the county has been gracious enough to have their road grader go up there and turn around, and of course, plow the snow out so that they can turn around there. But the owner, Mike, is planning on moving the driveway from its present location south of the red line there that is where the road closed sign or barricade would be put. He's going to move his driveway south of that and enter his property further south than what the location is now.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for him? Any other questions?
Would you give your name and address?
My name is Dan Roth, and my address is 9227 Indian Creek Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from the property owner?
Well, I'm just curious where the additions are, because it doesn't look like it appears it's even close to the road.
So the house is right here, and we were trying to put a garage off in this direction here.
And that doesn't allow you to do it right now?
Uh... We went to another board, and apparently it's required fifty feet from the property line, which is currently, like, where did I must go? It's currently right here, and that's forty-seven feet. So they wouldn't grant us a variance. That's where here.
So it's like a pole building you're putting up?
No, it's a regular stick-built, you know, garage, two bays.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the road vacating it. It just seems to me there's all kinds of room there.
Well...
It's not even close to the... Is it DOT's land right now or county?
It's a county road.
All the way to, how far up to 20?
Well, up here, this is the, excuse me. This would be that property line. So north of all of this is owned, that is DOT right-of-way.
Okay.
And we're just, this is county property today. The... We have a permanent easement there. Mr. Farrell is saying that due to the setback in the variances, they would not meet that.
What, did you go to planning zoning already on this, or the Board of Adjustments?
We were there about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, and we presented all of this to them, and they were just unwilling to grant a variance.
Thank you.
I may give you a little information. Offset in the property line there, coming down the middle of the road and coming back off to the east, is the reason that was the, on the east side, that was originally the line fence for the half-mile. And being this acreage is there, the DOT veered off to the north and went around that. Because if you get further west of this acreage, then the boundary line for Highway 20 is on the half-mile mark again. So that's the reason for that offset in the property line.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we close the hearing? Do you have a motion or a second?
I don't know if we had a second.
Yep.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution to consider any damages to property owners affected by vacating and conveying the above-named individuals, the county-owned property described above.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors vacate and convey to the above-named individuals of county-owned property described above.
Second.
Discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution to direct the chair to sign this final order of vacation, vacating and conveying the above-named individuals of county-owned property described above.
So moved.
Second.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Maximan.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the chair be directed to sign quitclaim deeds to the adjoining property owners above-named individuals for the parcels legally described above.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maximan.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, it's 9:09 hearing, bid opening on the proposed sale of the Country View Care Facility.
Motion received. Place on file proof of publication.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received. Any written comments?
There were a couple of emails sent to the Board of Supervisors. One from Timothy Riley, where he says he expresses support to approve the sale of Country View Home. The other from Jim and Denise Buska, saying that they think that selling Country View is the best choice fiscally that they make, and they can still support the new owners financially if need be for their most destitute and needy residents.
Any oral comments from the public?
Two emails, that's all you got, saying something bad about Country View?
Come up to the microphone.
You got, Melissa Lee, I work at Country View. You got two emails, that's all, in support of selling it? Out of two thousand, over two thousand signatures we got? I don't think it's the right choice. I think it's morally wrong to sell Country View. This is their home. They have nowhere else to go. These people were born disabilities that they didn't ask for.
Anyone else? Come up to the microphone and give your name and address.
You do understand the only thing we're doing today is opening the bids? They're going to be placed on file?
I understand that.
There's no sale today or anything?
So you had two emails with all your...
Actually, there was three or four. I'm not sure why the folder only had two, but yeah, it was three or four at best.
My name's Catherine Harrington, and I work at Country View. And my main concern about this is the mental illness. Where are these people going to go? I work a lot of hours a week out there for my people out there, and I do not want them to be just let go. There's a bad situation out here with mental illness, and I hope we keep that in mind because I have family members, and everybody has family members with mental illness, don't have nowhere to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley?
My name is Shirley Mae Patchen. I live in Hudson. I've been on the board at Country View for probably ten, twelve years, however long they've had it. And I just feel, and I worked for county for twenty-five years, not out there, but down here. And I feel that this is the home for several people, and I've said this before, we got to take care of these people. You know, county used to, taxpayers used to pay for it out there. Then all of a sudden, the board decided that they could, they could do it on their own, Country View. We had a board of directors at the time, and we're doing that. Then we found out, we weren't getting enough money for Medicare or Medicaid to pay for this. And, uh, is that my time?
No.
Oh, okay. And so anyway, I think it's time that we, we think taxpayers should go back to paying for these people. Not all of us have family out there, but it's, that's important because we're taking care of everybody's family. People don't, there's a lot of people out there that don't have family, and we're taking care of them. You just got to, I know a lot of people here are from Pentryview, and I know a lot of you guys have been out there. If we could just get more of the public out there to see what's going on, what a wonderful place it is. I mean, if I had, if I had somebody to, my mother or dad were still alive, that's where I'd take them, because that's where they get the best care, and thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Anyone else?
My name is Deborah Viviance. I work at Country View. I've been there almost thirty years, and Country View is very well-needed. Even the thought of even selling Country View is just disgusting. It's, I mean, we've been out there, and the community completely supports that country. They don't have a problem with their taxes being raised. They don't have a problem with none of that. You know, you're not going to get no better care than what we have at Country View. And I don't know, and maybe I shouldn't be saying this, maybe I'm out of line. But you know, this is election year. I'm sorry. But the people out there are very unhappy, very unhappy. And you know, people that are going to free election and stuff probably should watch it because people out there are not for you. They're upset.
I'll tell you what, I...
I mean, they're just as upset. You think this is about the staff at Country View? This isn't about the staff. This is about those people out there who have nobody. They depend on us. And if we don't, you know, and the fact that they have to go somewhere else, that's terrible. I mean, that is just, that's inhuman. I mean, why make these people leave their homes? Some people have been there for fifty-two years. You know, I can retire. I, it doesn't matter, because I can retire today if I want to. And as far as taxes, no, I don't live in Blackhawk County. I live in Buchanan County, but I work for Country View. But you know, if it makes a difference, I'll gladly pay. You can tax my house, and I'll gladly pay my taxes and hand it to you. I'll write you a check every year, because it doesn't bother me. I mean, that's how good, how much I feel about Country View needs to survive. I would write you a check every year of taxes on my house, whatever you're going to raise everybody else. Because it's a tragedy for you to even think about selling Country View. It's just, it's terrible.
Thank you.
I mean, it just makes you sick to your stomach to think that you would just put them people out of their home.
I guess the point of clarification is that the sale does not provide for closing of Country View. It provides for maintaining Country View.
I read the RFP.
So to say that they would be kicked out is not correct.
Yeah.
They're only going to keep fifty percent of Medicaid. All our residents out there are Medicaid, and everybody knows that. So where would the other fifty percent of our people go? Where are they going to live? Who, how are they going to choose these people? These people don't have any family. They don't have any other homes. This is all they have. This is all they know.
How come Buchanan County closed theirs?
Buchanan County does not have one.
That, every county had one at one time, almost.
MHI is Buchanan County. MHI is Buchanan County.
Well, what are they doing there?
They've, they've cut down, but they never closed it. It's not closed.
Okay.
They still have four units up there. They're down to minimum, but they have not closed it. And those are for people that are very severe. That's why they can't close. Where are they gonna go to quit and close it?
Which facility are we talking about?
MHI, where-
That's state facility.
That's a state facility. It's not a county facility. That's all we have. You said every county has one. No, we didn't have one. That's all we had. But the thought, I mean, the thing that you would even think about selling Country View and, for these people, and Craig, you of all people, you've always loved them people. You used to come out there and volunteer.
I still love them. Don't-
I'm not saying you didn't, don't love them. I didn't say that. I said you always loved them people.
I always will.
And you used to come out there all the time and visit them people.
I still come out there all the time.
You haven't, the last few times you come out there, you haven't been there to see, um-
I've, I've been out there to talk to you guys. I looked you straight in the eye and told you what was going on.
You've talked to us.
Now, tell me I didn't.
You've talked to us, yes.
I've talked to, and there's some of you that you ought to be ashamed of yourself for spreading rumors that we're gonna kick them out on the street. You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Oh, and there's no rumors there.
Yes, there are rumors.
No, there ain't no rumors there. We never spread no rumors of that. We have a copy of the RFP, and we've showed people the copy of the RFP. We have never said we're gonna kick them out.
Yeah. Who translates it for them? Some of them people can't read and understand that. Richie and David can't understand.
Oh, but we're talking about residents. Oh, we've never told the residents that. I thought you talked about the community. I thought you talked about the community with the RFP. Yeah, we have showed people the RFP, uh, in the community. As far as the residents, we do not talk about this with residents, because our residents are very upset. We do not wanna create behaviors and make them upset every day. So, no, we don't, that's, that is not true. What you just accused me of is not true.
I'd like to have every one of your employees stand up and look me straight in the eye and tell me they haven't been spreading rumors of it.
I can come up there and look at them. I haven't spread one rumor.
You're out of order. Sit down.
You asked. You said, you said you wanted to see faces. I don't even know who you are. I've never did that.
I know, but sit down, please.
Please.
Have a seat.
But as far, but as far as, I have never, ever told a resident that, never. I care too much about the residents.
So do I. That's why I get upset when I go out there and hear that.
And I have never, ever told a resident you were gonna kick them out.
Well-
The residents read the paper. They hear on the news. They hear, they whatever. I don't know. If anybody's telling them that, I don't know who's telling them that, but I know I have never told them anything.
I suspect you're not.
I haven't.
I suspect you're not.
I haven't. I would never hurt them people.
They're not gonna be hurt.
I wouldn't hurt them by telling them that.
No, I, I, I know you wouldn't, but there are some people out there that are doing this, just like when I told you guys.
I can't speak for everybody. I have never heard nobody, but I can speak.
The reason that things are the way they are is because of the people that don't have enough gumption to come into work when they're supposed to be there. That's why some of this is happening. If you guys were, if the people that are taking advantage of the system out there were to work any other place, they would be out on the street. You, you guys-
Some people, yes, some people might be, yes.
That's right. You guys-
I can't argue that with you. There are people that can do that.
And they're the, they're the ones that are causing-
Country View is-
One, one at a time, one at a time.
We've had some bad management out there. We've had some bad administrators out there. Our last few administrators didn't care about them people. They didn't care about Country View. I mean, we didn't hire the administrators to come out there and run that place, but we've had some really bad ones. They didn't care nothing about this place, nothing about Country View. They didn't even care. They didn't even come out, introduce themselves to the resident. They didn't even come out there and introduce themselves to the staff. Now, I mean, how personable is that? They just walk in the building and walk around like they're, and like they're better than everybody, don't talk to nobody, that's... And then, you know, then we got, then we had one that just, all they wanted to do was put cameras up there. I mean, we didn't have any, the last couple administrators, they didn't care about Country View. They didn't have nothing, no caring, no heart in Country View at all. You know, so, no, it's not all the staff missing work. We had bad-
I didn't say that.
We had bad management. We had bad administrators. You know, and now, you know, they're making money now. Carol, Amanda, and guys, and, and Sherri, they're, they're bringing money in now. They're showing you that they can, they can run it right. I mean, why can't they be given a chance? Just give them a chance to, to even show you guys. I mean-
We've been watching what they're doing, very carefully, and we, we've talked to them, we've applauded them for what they're doing. I've been out there and talked to them. I've been out there at their meetings and said that, what a great job you guys are doing to turn things around. You've been dropping your budget by one percent in each department. You're doing a great job, but there's still a deficit.
Well, it takes time to pull that deficit back, bring the, make the money back, and you just can't make it back overnight. I mean, if they could have the chance to just run it and then bring skilled in, bring some private care in, you know, bring veteran insurance people, I mean, you can bring them in. We used to have them. What about the, you know, you, you know that yourself. Country View used to hand money back over to the county. They used to make money and hand money back. I've been there. I, I know. I know they used to hand money back to you guys. I mean, I mean, it's been a few years, yeah. It's been a while, but you know yourself. Country View can be run right, under the right people. And, you know, they, they didn't have a problem with Country View then. The county never had a problem. I mean, and as far as the taxpayers, the taxpayers don't care about that. Taxes are gonna raise every ti- every year. Every year, your taxes are gonna go up. They go up for something every year. Some people's taxes go up a hundred dollars a year. And I know that for a fact, 'cause I know somebody that does. But, I mean, as far as that, no. We've been out there. We know. We know these people in the community. You're talking about people elderly on fixed incomes. They're all for Country View staying here. We've been over to the upper grade, upper level, over right, right where Frank lives and all that. They're all, well, I'm just, I know Frank lives over there, because we went by his house. He even knocked on his door one day. We didn't know it was his house until we got knocked, that there was nobody home. But we did go, we went to every neighborhood. We went over to Linda Langland's. We've been to Tom Little's neighborhood. We've been to Krista's neighborhood. We've been to yours. You know, there's a sign right down the road from you, on your corner.
Yep, sure is.
Chris has one in his front yard. Everybody knows that. Tom has one down the road from him. Linda has one in her neighborhood. One of our residents, the people that are over our residence. And Frank had one a few houses down from him. We, you all know, we, we've been doing it. We've been in every neighborhood. We've been to little towns around here. We've been to Cedar Falls. We've been everywhere. We've been, um, even went to other nursing homes, get, talked to them. Everybody's back in Country View. Everybody is.
Well, not everybody is.
Not everybody, but everybody, most, we, we've had a whole five people. Two of the men that we talked to were on papers, so they wouldn't put their name on it. That's the only reason they wouldn't do it. And one didn't live in the county, and the other two were against it. That was it. That's the only, only negativity we had. And one of the ones was your best, one of your good friends, because I was at Hy-Vee when I got, and he probably, I, I'm assuming, I don't know, I, I would think he probably would've called you and told you about it. But he was one of them, and I can't remember the man's name.
Hey, wanna thank you for everything. You said, are you the spokesperson today then for everybody?
Um, I just came up for speaking.
Yeah, I, I, I know, but I mean, we try to live in three minutes, so everybody has an opportunity.
Okay, but I'm just saying, it's, you know, sale of Country View is just, it's, it's horrifying to think that you would, I mean, it's just, I mean-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
I'm Jerry Hagman, uh, three zero five-two San Salvador Drive in Waterloo. I'm the treasurer of CW, of CWA seventy-one oh-eight, which has just become the union for these folks, so, but I'm new to the situation. But I just wanna say that, uh, our president is also, Steve Abbott could not be here this morning. He wanted to be, uh, in support of what the previous speaker is saying, what they're, I've never seen an, a membership organically, uh, like I say, as I walk around politic and for the upcoming primaries, to see all these signs is very impressive. It's, you can tell it's a very contentious issue. It's close to the heart of the, as Craig has always said at our other meetings, that, of the residents out there. The residents out there are the, are the real reason that we're all here discussing this, this morning. But I just wanna say I'm in support of what they say. I realize it's very contentious. I'm also on the board of New Aldea, and, and we fight budget issues every month, just like you do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? I have a motion and a second on the floor to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. Bids received, open and read, bid deadline, three o'clock, Friday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
We received two bids. Uh, they were both received by the deadline. The first is from Pritok Capital.
Spell that.
P-R-I-T-O-K. Uh, the amount is five million, six hundred thousand. The next bid is from Beacon Health Management.
Spell that, please.
B-E-A-C-O-N.
Where's Pritok out of?
Pritok is, uh, in Illinois, LLC.
Beacon Health?
Beacon Health is, um, I believe it's in Florida. Let me look. They, they were both, um, sent in preliminary bids, and so I believe one was Florida, and the other one was Illinois. Uh, and their bid is five million, five hundred thousand.
Make a motion that we review and place on file.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution adopted. This is a motion that the Board of Supervisors review and place on file bids to be allowed time to review the bids.
I think that's what we just did.
That's what, that's what we just did.
All right. Any reports or information from the board? I'd just like to report that I wanna thank everyone that had anything to do with, uh, putting up flags in the cemetery at Garden of Memories. Uh, we had short staff this year. The four of us that were left, three gentlemen from, uh, Post Forty-nine in Cedar Falls, and one, and his wife, and me were responsible for putting up four, four different gardens out there, because we ran short on, helped, uh, National Guard didn't show up. I always thought they were ready, ready, willing, and able all the time, but they didn't show up to do the, to the garden, so, we had a short staff, but yep, last night, wanna thank everybody that showed up to take them down. We did it in record time, almost four thousand flags, and we had them down in forty-one minutes. So, thank Mr. Maxman, and there are several other people I'll be sending thank yous to. And, uh, the people that put on the ceremony downtown yesterday was fantastic. Uh, Lieutenant, or, yeah, Colonel, uh, Stevens did one heck of a nice talk. He's talked about how the United States has gotten from where it was in seven, when we first were founded, to where we are today, so... Which leads to the point where we're at today, you know, the stuff that we can agree to disagree on, different subjects. With that, I'll entertain a more-
I'll just-
I guess I'd make one-
Go ahead, sorry.
-statement about Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah.
Was invited to Fredericksburg, Iowa, to speak at their memorial services. And they've been a great supporter of the Honor Flights. They provided us, what, a check of fifteen thousand dollars, and we've received three checks from Chickasaw County, which will be nearly a hundred thousand dollars that, uh, the communities, specifically Lawler and Fredericksburg, and Chickasaw County has raised money to support the Cedar Valley Honor Flights. I wanna thank them for their money, for their donation.
Thank you, Frank.
I just wanna thank, um, Greg, for, it was a really nice Memorial Day service to be at, and I thank you for your, um, help in organizing that. Just remind the public that I'll be holding a town hall next Monday at five-thirty on, on Country View. We'll dive deep into, um, what the details are of these two proposals and kind of the business practices and histories of these two companies. They'll be five-thirty next Monday at the Waterloo Public Library.
Thank you. Anything else come before us? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. We are adjourned.